... meaning to order and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we begin with public audience. Mrs. Boyko, would you like to talk to us?
I only have two more times.
You have plenty of time for everybody but me, honey.
I actually don't have a notebook.
Yeah, what happened?
Unprepared.
That's fine.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oakhurst Road, and I actually only have one point to make, which I found out the other day, and I just wanted to clarify for the whole board because I don't think anybody realized. The Department of Education has something called an Equity Council.
Are we talking to the State Department event?
No, ours. I think it's ours.
Okay.
I don't actually have clarity on how the whole thing got set up or who started, or it doesn't really matter. It's an Equity Council that is typically, I'm going to use the word chaired or run, or the meetings are run by Dr. Bachelor, and it is comprised of teachers and parents and some Board of Ed members and some community members, I think. I don't know if there's anybody else. But the point is, what I got clarified is that is actually technically, I believe, a public meeting that is supposed to be run like a public meeting in terms of its noticing and its minutes and being open to the public. I could be wrong, but from the research that I've done, it appears that since it is not a staff meeting, if it was just staff, then that would not be a public meeting.
So if it's, so equity started in one form, morphed to another, I think we need to just review.
It's just a point of information worth reviewing further, is all I'm saying.
Appreciate it.
And the clarification that I got was if it was comprised of teachers, administrators, faculty, staff members, that is not a public meeting, clearly. It's employee-staff meeting. But once you start bringing in other members of the public, and it's created by a member of the public entity, whether it's the superintendent, I don't actually know how, whether it's the Board of Ed, whether it's the superintendent, whether it's the Board of Selectmen, and then it's comprised of those members, it becomes a public meeting and requires those notices under FOIA.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. We're going to start with committee reports and BOE communications. Sophie.
Okay, so at Supen Hills, grades four through six have been making sandwiches for the local homeless population in Hartford County, and then at both Two Enin Squadron, they hosted a cultural enrichment program for Hispanic Heritage Month, and then all schools held successful Veterans Day assemblies, and schools across the district are currently participating in the Jackman and Turkey Truck. And then as for the high school, the Triad Music Honors Society was featured on the Channel Eight news segment, What's Right in Our Schools, for their 2022 to 2023 Connecticut State Chapter of the Year Award. The Tech Ed Department hosted their annual Pen-athon and made 274 pence for veterans and raised over $1,200. Girls soccer won the CCC championships and is moving on to the Class L semifinals on Wednesday. The Men's Night Out and Nothing But Trouble concerts have been moved to November 21st next week, and the Track Record Board will finally be unveiled on Friday.
Yay. Do you know where the girls soccer game is being played by any chance? You're right.
Willow Park.
Okay, so if anybody wants to attend. I don't mean to put you on the spot, I know you just walked in.
I'm ready.
Ready to go?
So shout out again to the girls volleyball team. Thank you for mentioning that, too. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was I attended just for our own P O C D, and I think if we have-
Just for those who don't know, Plan of Conservation and Development meeting, there was a public meeting.
Yeah, there was a public meeting, and I really think we, if we haven't had a chance to take a look at that, we should take a look at it. Just from the standpoint of the whole purpose of the P O C D is to have a strategy for the town, and we are a part of the town.
Yep.
And all that we're doing amongst our schools, any outward planning that we're doing, we need to make sure that it's being captured.
Right, you mean in reference to capital improvements?
Capital improvement plan, yes, definitely. So I would encourage us to do that. And then the other thing that I, only a question that I wanted to bring up, and I saw that gospel choir at the high school is on hold, but on hold until when?
Because- Do you know, Sophie?
Yeah.
Our choir teacher has, or she's recovering from like really severe pneumonia, so she was just been out for like the past three weeks. She's back, I think it should be back like next week or the week after, but she just missed it.
Okay, because it didn't say, and then I started thinking, that's a community.
Nope.
What are we doing to make sure that they're, they're on hold?
Yep.
So that's it.
Great.
I'm all set for right now.
As far as community events, I'd like to mention that the Saturday night after Thanksgiving is a townwide Simsbury celebrates, and it will be taking place 5:30 to 7:15. The fire truck parade will come along, and then we'll have fireworks immediately thereafter. And I just want to make sure everyone knows that they're invited and it's free to the town. It's supported by a lot of great generous community members and, and just townspeople, which are wonderful that they make it happen, so that's all I'm saying.
You spearhead an awesome volunteer crew. You spearhead an awesome volunteer crew.
Amazing volunteer group. Working with Parks and Rec.
Mr. Burke?
Nothing.
Jen?
Hello. I just wanted to piggyback on something Sophie said, and you guys have heard me say this every year at this time, but I'm going to, I'm going to do it again. I just want to reemphasize and encourage the community to participate and donate to the Jackman and Turkey Truck. This board in particular, I believe, really-
Yeah.
-should be emphasizing that. For those who don't know, Mr., I still call him Mr. Bannon. He was my sixth grade teacher, was a teacher in this district for 32 years. He was a World War II veteran, fought in the Battle of the Bulge, and he was a, he was a Board of Selectmen individual here, member, sorry, member here for 10 years. I just, this, this gentleman encapsulated everything that's good about this community and was a real pillar of this community, so I would encourage everybody to get behind this effort and donate as much as you can.
And you started this on his own?
Yes, yep. And, and what a better way to honor him and the veterans and the Simsbury teacher community as well. I know you can still donate till tomorrow. The high school is accepting donations. Grocery stores are accepting, so I just-
To make it simple, it's everywhere but Big Y, I believe. So it's Fitzgerald's, it's Stop &amp; Shop in Simsbury. Geistler's, I think, is even participating? But there's, there is, there are resources, you can find it anywhere and everywhere, but please, they have prepackaged bags, you can go in and just grab one.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good point. Yes, so this week we will be, starting Thursday, the annual Cave Caps Convention at the Mystic Marriott, and on Thursday, we will be having our All-Day Delegate Assembly, and the delegate assembly is our, will be our working document of about 50 resolutions we're going to put forward when we, when we commence in January with our own General Assembly here in Connecticut. So we will be there Thursday, working on all these resolutions that have been put forth, and, and I will let you know further what we will need from each, from boards as we pursue this for January. Then the convention will start on Friday. We have probably about 600 attendees coming to Friday and Saturday. The governor should be coming. Commissioner Cardona is going to be televised in. He won't be able to make it in person, but he will be-
Zooming in?
He'll be zooming in, he'll be coming to zoom in. Then we have a meeting with the State Board of Education, and so there's a lot that's going to be going on, and, and it's going to be very exciting. We've got some very excellent keynote speakers, national speakers that will be coming. So this will be great, because as you know, we just had recent elections, so we do have new board members that will be attending also, and, and we do have student participation, so which is, which is always, for me, is always the best part, is that we have student groups from around the state that were selected to sing and to perform and to dance and what have you. So, so that will be the convention for the next, the next three days, so a lot of work goes into it, but it's definitely worthwhile, and I know some of you participated. If you can't make it this year, I encourage you to come next year. And I see our two new board members in the back over here, Josh. So they will, I will be sending them information because you'll be participating in a one-day workshop in December for all new board members that were elected last Tuesday around the state, so I will send you that information. Katie can register you for that, and, and you'll be attending that for a whole day, so you'll learn everything you need to know about, about becoming a board member, from soup to nuts, but it's, I'll be there also, but it's-
Do you get the book of acronyms?
You get the big white binder. You get that special white binder.
The book of acronyms is my favorite thing that I ever bought from Cave.
Yep, so you'll be getting that, so anything you need to know or want to know or didn't know you didn't know or need to ask, from, from legal to policy to you name it, it will all be, you know, covered that day, so. But that's also a very, and it's December 6th, you can put that down on your calendar, so, but it's a very, very interesting day, so we've got, all the new board members will be attending that.
Great.
Good.
Thanks.
Mr. Sullivan.
Progress on the Latimer Lane construction project-
Yay.
-continues to be amazing, and we will be moving in early on December 4th. They're going to move on the first weekend of December, and the eight brand-new classrooms in, that you're facing Latimer Lane in the back-left corner, which is southwest.
So the shell we walked around a couple of months ago.
Yes, is opening on December 4th, and eight classrooms will move in temporarily and then come back to their permanent homes after summer. And then the new jam cafeteria all open right after Christmas break, so we'll schedule a board tour for each of the-
Can our board members come? Just saying.
I don't know.
Just saying, can I come along?
Emeritus or something?
Stop with the smile, all right?
I just want to see it. I worked really hard.
And actually, because they're out of schedule, we learned that, that the phasing schedule is actually moving a little more quickly, so that we're going to, we're going to get a couple-month jump on some other areas of the building. As, so it'll make the last six months much easier.
So our final timeline to open the building fully, as I understand it, is December-
Correct.
-of '24.
Correct.
Is that moving up, or we're just going to-
Right now, they're, they're not changing that timeline, but it's possible they could, because the final phase, Phase Three-
Yep.
-is going to be slightly smaller because they're picking up some time.
Okay.
So I would not be surprised if they could pick up-
That's great.
-time, but they haven't committed to it yet.
That's great.
Yay.
Good stuff.
Good stuff.
Always good stuff.
Two things. Last week, we had an incredible full-day professional development, day of professional learning with our staff. So that morning is usually structured after opening remarks. Staff can choose three different sessions that are presented by a number of different people. Could be their colleagues. We had people from Cigna under our Employee Wellness Program come and provide strategies on mindfulness, but it's a great day. We've garnered some incredible feedback. And then in the afternoon, our staff are able to participate in their own self-directed professional learning. So all educators have very individualized and specific growth plans, and there is a lot of work that they want to do and get smarter at. So they participated in that in the afternoon, and it was a great day.
Awesome.
The second piece is that tomorrow night, Matt gets to attend our Connecticut Teacher of the Year Ceremony, and will be bringing along our Kathleen McGowan, Simsbury Teacher of the Year, Kristy Sistone. So that's just a great day of celebration and something that they will enjoy together.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Awesome.
All right, and I have nothing except to say congratulations to our new board members and to those who got reelected. Yay for all of you. And I'm going to move on to approval of the minutes. So recommended actions. The first motion needs to be adjusted because it's actually the approval of the minutes of our October 10th meeting, as our October 24th meeting was canceled. So can I get someone to please make that corrected motion?
Make the motion to approve the minutes from the October 10th meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Approval of minutes from the November 2nd special meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on November 2nd.
And a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention? All right. Personnel, Mr. Sullivan.
Just one item for your action tonight. Megan Schumway is a special education teacher at Simsbury High School. This is a relocation out of state for, this is for family reasons, is going to the nice place of Virginia. So congratulations to Megan and her family as they relocate, and 10 years of service at Simsbury High School, including most of those years also served as our Girls Cross Country coach, so put in the, the extra miles, so to say.
She waited until cross-country season was rounding up.
So, and congratulations on her life change down to Virginia.
Awesome. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
And a second, please?
A second.
Any discussion? Just a lot of thanks from us and good luck, 10 years. That's a wonderful debt of service to us, so we appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't know if I wanted, if I should have done it in discussion, but just, since she's resigning and moving on in the middle of the year, does that-
Is that a whole-
Drain us? Yeah, is that a, is that a, create any issues or for us?
I am signing her replacement. I have an appointment on Friday to, so we've already conducted the search.
Awesome.
Found somebody from another local school district willing to make the jump.
I think in a coach cross-country, too.
We'll have a gap of a few weeks, and some of the other teachers in the department will-
Fill the gap.
Kind of fill the gap.
Great. Awesome.
How soon after someone tells us does it hit the agenda? I'm just curious.
This probably would have been on your last one a couple of weeks ago if we had not, this was on your last meeting a couple of weeks ago. So she, she probably resigned in, right around Columbus Day, is my memory of it.
Okay. Perfect. Acceptance of gift from Central School. Yes, we actually have two gifts for your consideration tonight, and in keeping with your policy, any gifts that exceed $1,500 need your approval. So the first is from the Central School PTO. The gift is in the amount of $3,350, and this donation will help defray the cost of Grade Six Camp Jewel for Central School students. So there is a motion there for your consideration. Can I get someone to make that, please?
Move that the proposed gift of $3,350 to Central School by the Central School Parent Teacher Organization be approved.
Second. Any discussion?
Amazing.
Once again, our PTOs keep us moving forward.
Sure do.
Much appreciation to them.
Camp Jewel's great.
Yeah, such a good experience for them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Terrific. The second gift is from the Cultural Enrichment Committee. So this committee actually supports cultural programming in all of the elementary schools. This past year, there were three performances. One, Asian Performing Art, the second was African Drumming, and the third was Ballet: Little Cinderella. This year, I think, Sophie, you just spoke to this, Legends of the Spanish-speaking World, and then they will have Caribbean Vibe coming in. So I can't wait to hear about that. But the gift is in totality $21,825, and there is a motion there for your consideration.
Will that the proposed gift of funds from all the elementary school parent teacher organizations to provide cultural programming to elementary school students be accepted?
Second. Any discussion?
This is such a great group. I mean-
I know, you should be on it.
Yeah, it was, it's a lot of work, and it's, it's wonderful that all the schools come together and bring this stuff, and it's been going on for years and years and years, so it's really nice that it's still going.
It's a nice unifying experience among all five schools.
It's really wonderful.
They do, they always do different things.
Yeah, try to make it unique.
Try to mix it up.
Which ones they're doing.
And I was going to say the same, and I was able to actually go to one this year, and I just walked out with a smile bigger than my neighbor's smile, so it's really good, and people can, you know, make the time to go if they should.
It's a great experience, yeah.
And just to see the kids' reactions and then getting involved, too.
Agreed. Did I take a vote?
Nope.
No, no. All those in favor? Sorry, it's been a long day. All right, so now we are on to information and reports. This is so exciting. I'm going to ask Principal Scott Baker and Assistant Principal Jaclyn Patrella to join the presentation table, and tonight you'll hear them speak all about Henry James Memorial School. So we have 635 students that are roaring right now. You will hear about the roar of respect, responsibility, and integrity. They will highlight some of the great celebrations from this past year and talk about the priorities ahead, so I'm going to turn it over to Scott and Jaclyn.
Sure, so we're really excited to be presenting, especially given, I think, what we have to present. I know last year we came to talk about our data and our accomplishments, and a lot of what we were talking about was like, this is, remember, this is coming out of COVID, we still have action plans, and a lot of what we put in, you know, we presented some data where these are like areas where we certainly need to show growth, and I think this report shows that. I think you might hear, it might get a little repetitive, so we'll try to keep you awake with some nice graphics, because a lot of what we put into place last year were like multi-year initiatives and things that we were going to be continuing forward for several years, so we can, we'll talk to that as well. But so, one of, we're, we'll talk about roar goals in a little bit, but one of my roar goals last year and this year with the kids is our Instagram account, so that's the theme of this presentation, as I've used all screenshots from our Instagram account from last year, except for this one is this year. I think this was a staff photo of all of the teachers and staff at the start of '22, '23. They certainly aren't smiling and looking like that right now. We are right in the thick of things as we're wrapping up the first trimester, but a good place to start in terms of how, how we began the year. I'll begin with just a few highlights. I think some big headlines are our SEL Committee and the work that they did last year refining the HJ Way and Aurora branding, and, and looking at the character traits and using tickets and involving students in creating common language around the school with that. That's gone really well. We really rebooted our extracurricular life. That was one of the goals I talked to you about last year, and over 65% of the kids participated in at least one, like, club, intermural, started a bunch of new clubs, so very exciting to have students involved, and we see that, that same engagement this year as well. We had, we'll get to this in a minute, but like our Fall Fest, I think we had over a third of the school at like an after-school event where it was like a big party and kind of stuff, it's really, really cool.
Ran out of pumpkins.
We ran out of pumpkins.
That was how many kids attended.
We did.
Wow.
We ran out of donuts, too.
Pumpkins and donuts, who wouldn't want to go?
And it was about 95 degrees out, too. Jaclyn, we'll talk more about this later in the presentation, but she's really spearheaded a parent education series that has gone really well last year. We did a full screening of something called Screenagers, talking about the digital, digital lives of students, and had local practitioners in to work with families as well. I think a huge highlight is our first-ever Grade Eight Promotion Ceremony. Henry James has never done it before, and, you know, anytime you do something new like that, a big undertaking, it's half the, well, it's the same size as the Simsbury High graduation in our little auditorium that we did, and we were able to pull it off. It was, it was really great. Awesome way to cap off the year. We resumed some of our out-of-state trips, which was great. Our musical was a huge hit, the High School Musical. Talked a little bit about the Fall Fest. We also do a Spring Fest, and Neon Night was enormous. Actually, I'll show you some pictures from that. And then students are-
I'm sure Neon Night's eight years, that's why I'm laughing.
Right. We've started some, you're back into some of the competitions, too, so our students have won some awards in robotics and math counts and chess. And then we launched a one-school-one-book thing last year, which then carried into this year, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Pictures worth a thousand words, so here's just a few posts. Like I said, this was my goal for last year, of just showing our families and highlighting our kids throughout the year. So you can see our promotion ceremony at the top left there, our packed eighth-grade gym. You see our kids down in New York at the, at their field trip. Culture Night was attended by over, like 250 people came to our Culture Night down on the bottom there and brought food from all of, all different, you know, heritages that they had. Our Fall Fest with the pumpkins, they didn't run out at that point. Our girls there in the middle for Neon Night, and then our Spring Fest in the top right there, we had inflatables and all that kind of stuff. And then Team Assemblies down on the bottom right, which we have our grade-level teams get together and, and share celebrations of what they've done through the trimesters there. So just a few, you know, posts of, of things that were happening last year. Getting, shifting to what I'm pretty excited about showing, showing you are indicators of success from last year. So I talked at length last year about kind of our process and what we do to help students make progress individually, but also in groups of students, you know, grouped by standards and how we're working through that. And happy to report our ELA results are up to school-wide from last year, within 4% of the top school in our district reference group. And then I think the one thing we still are taking a hard look at is we did have a larger-than-typical decline from six to seven. We typically have a decline in the data when you go from grade six to seven. In other towns, you look at that decline, if they have a six-eight school, you see a little bit of a decline from five to six in standardized data. It's just one of those trends that you see. Usually we see around a 4% to 5% decline. This year it was eight, so we're taking a look at that. We had a lot of kids that were like right on that bubble, I think, which is part of it, but the language arts teachers are taking a look at this and using kind of the same process that we, we talked about last year with that. However, overall results for the school are strong.
Scott, if I could just interrupt for a second, one of the sessions of professional development the other day was actually facilitated by Jaclyn and a number of teachers at Henry James, and it was well-attended by our elementary teachers and just starting to talk very openly about what they can do and how we can combine efforts to really narrow that, that gap and to make it as successful a transition as possible. So really appreciated you facilitating that, and people are hungry for those additional discussions so we can best support our students. Yeah, that vertical support is so key.
I had so many of the former elementary principals that I know from my time in the elementarys come up to me in the hallway when we were walking through, going, "That presentation was so good, you know, we definitely have to meet again." They were really excited about it, so they did a great job with that. I think a big celebration is math, that this is an area where the district has spent considerable time and effort in trying to figure out how do we, how do we improve our student math performance? We're up 9% school-wide from last year, which is a significant increase from one year to the next, so 66% of our kids met goal in math. From seven to eight, we saw 5% growth from our seventh graders to our eighth graders, so it's really strong. And moved from being bottom five in DIRTTB last year to top five in DIRTTB this year. So some, some strong movement in math, and, you know, we, we've got some really good momentum going, and that's, you'll see that in a, in a future slide, is that's, that's kind of a theme, I think, for a lot of our data this year, is we've got extremely strong momentum coming out of last year, and then, you know, how do we continue to build on that? Science, we had a 1% increase from last year, second in our DIRTTB. Last year we were first in our DIRTTB, so someone had a little more growth than we did. But, you know, you can't ask for more than, than continuing to grow from a place where we were top in our district reference group.
How many districts in the DIRTTB?
About 14, 15, something like that. Yep. And it's, it's a tricky comparison, because some schools are seven-eights, some are five-eights, some are six-eights, when they call like the middle school in terms of what your middle schools are, so.
We're fairly unusual with just the seven-eight.
Yeah, well, there's a few around-
Couple.
-with us with the seven-eight, but yeah. And I think like how we got there, I talked a little bit about last year, how we look at individual kids, but really it's about targeting those specific standards. Teachers and their teacher teams, looking at the data, trying to garner like trends, and what are the specific standards that we need to be looking at? Math this year, one of the areas that they saw students needing quite a bit of work with was their communication standard, and how do they explain their reasoning and such? And so that's become a part of like all their tests. Now, there's a separate rubric at the bottom of their test. How are you, how have you communicated your reasoning? And so we're assessing that a little bit more and teaching into that. So that's, and then the other piece is spiral skills, meaning like revisiting those skills that you taught in September, back in December, back in January, in a daily, in a daily basis to make sure they don't lose some of that stuff that they learned before. So those are two specific things that we did. Other really important strategies are crossing over into other subject areas. For instance, like English Language Arts, one area that they found that they need to still work on is the listening standard and being able to work with that. And so they've partnered with the world language and they're asking similar type of questions and doing similar type of instruction because that's important to do in Spanish and in French and in Latin, the listening standard. So they're partnering together with that. Art is actually partnering together with math about the communication standard and writing about their art pieces in some of the same ways. And so students are seeing some of these standards lined up, not just in the tested areas, which I think is another way in which to make sure students are making the progress we want them to make. So. So we're really pleased with how we go. We're not where we want to be, but we have certainly made some significant progress toward it last year.
Where do we want to be?
Where do I want to be? I want to, I, if I had to say, I want our students to be like, when you look at a whole group, you want to say 80% are making goal. I think then you know that you're firing on all cylinders and you're, have the right interventions and, you know, all of that. Now, we know that these students haven't had the same experience. You know, they missed their, what, third, fourth grade COVID. You know, so we're working through students and we're catching them up and it's collaboration with the elementary schools. But that's where we were prior to COVID, not in math, but in ELA, we were consistently above 80%. So we're marching, we're marching there, right? We got 2% this year. We keep, we keep the march and we keep moving forward.
The other thing that we focused on a lot was our intervention program too. So really supporting the struggling students with the work with our math intervention, our reading intervention, our executive functioning intervention.
We've been able to do some creative use of our Title I funds to get some additional staffing for this executive function skills, which has made a huge impact. To translate for non-educators, executive functions, organizational piece to study skills, the test-taking, all that kind of stuff.
Scott, can I just ask you, you said typically you'll see, you'll see a drop in the six to seven in ELA. Is that just the, the, the reading is more rigorous and more frequent or is it, what's?
I, you know, and again, this is, this is my opinion. I wouldn't say it's, it's a very well researched thing. But my opinion is it's just the trauma of switching schools. And, and, you know, for six years at squadron line or terrafill, you're just folk, you're not learning any new thing. You're going from class to class to class. You're not learning any new systems, new schedules, new friends, new way how a school works. And then you hit that into a new school and you're filtering all these in. It just, the brain only can process so much, right? And so some of that processing power is taken away from the academics to.
The social.
The social, right? The social and figuring out this whole new thing. But then we see a significant amount of growth seven to eight. So once they've acclimated, then you kind of see. So I think it takes some time to make that, that.
But it seems acute in ELA. Like how, why would it come out just in ELA then?
This is a one-year thing. Like we haven't seen this before.
Kind of an anomaly specifically in that area.
You do typically see a three, four point.
In math too.
In math too.
Like if you go back to the history of the cohorts, you see anywhere between a three to 5% dip year to year. And this one was like, oh, that's a little more than what we were accustomed to. So we're looking into like, why am I? That makes sense?
Yeah.
All right. So we're going to transition into other important pieces of data is our, our culture data and all that data that we do with the surveys. And so Jaclyn's going to take us through that.
So we broke it into three parts, the student survey, then we'll talk about the family and the staff survey as well. So the questions aren't exactly the same from year to year, so it makes it a little bit harder to compare some of the data. But we picked out the two areas that we really wanted to highlight in that we saw an increase in the overall feeling for students of safety and culture and belonging. And I think a lot of that is attributed to. That's why I have mine here for a few of that. You know, the increase in clubs and activities and intermurals. And you can see that was a strength from the students as well. So I think increasing our activities, really coming off of COVID and not having a lot of opportunities for students to feel like they belong in the building, we really, that was such a focus last year and it paid off. And you can see it in our survey results. And a lot of the work that we did on teams, by having the team assemblies, doing the tickets with teams and really bringing them together as a community, I think, helps them feel part of a small family within a big family. And that really is showing with our students. And when we did a Ctrl F, so there's, I mean, hundreds and hundreds, you've got 600 comments. Fun was the most word requested or frequently used word that came up. And so they think Henry James is fun. So we're excited that students enjoy coming to school overall. Being a parent of someone at Henry James, I don't know if fun is the word that she always uses, but they, they do enjoy all of the opportunities that are afforded to them, both in class. I think teachers really started to get back to more hands-on, active learning too. And I think that really had an impact on students. Homework was only mentioned twice and in previous years, homework was probably one of the most highly mentioned topics. And we've been working on a homework study and really streamlining the homework policies and strategies throughout the teams and departments. So I think that has paid off as well, that students feel a little bit more like it's reasonable and there aren't comparing team to team as much. So that's been great for us.
So is that, can you tell me a little bit more about what your policy is? Is that limiting or?
So, you know, we, we just at our, not this PTO meeting, but the one prior to this, took our final steps of like putting, it's a one-page homework policy, explaining like responsibilities of the parent, student, child. It's got some rules of engagement. It talks about when we don't give homework, like on religious holidays. It talks about when late assignments can be turned in. It gives some samples of what type of homework is for each subject. But it's on one page and we just had the, our PTC give some parent feedback. And now we had students get feedback and now it's ready to be put into our handbook for next year. But we've made a lot of the adjustments already.
That's great.
So exciting. And I think that we're seeing the fruits of those efforts.
That's great.
Some concerns the students mentioned, the bathrooms. Some of that is bathroom behavior, you know, kids congregating in the bathroom, doing TikToks in the bathroom. You know, stuff that we're working on over time. The water bottle, water bottle fillers, they want more of them. And so we are trying to work on that and especially by the art wing. And of course, air conditioning, we would all like that in the building. And the quality of lunch. I think that's.
It is what it is.
And then our response to this, to this survey data.
Badge of honor.
Chicken sandwiches the other day.
But in response to the data, we already talked about the homework policy. We're, a big piece for us is we are increasing the hallway monitoring, which includes the bathrooms. So we have more frequency of people going in and out of the bathrooms and teachers in the hallway during passing time and during non-passing time, because that's when some of that is happening, as well as additional staff in the cafeteria. And then we're continuing to work on our Roar Goals where they can really highlight, how do they want to have fun in school? How do they want to work towards their academic, social goals in school as well?
Yep. And I think a lot of the Roar Goals for staff led to additional opportunities for students. So some, a lot of the staff, we're going to, I'm going to share with you some of the Roar Goals at the end of the presentation, but led to staff like picking things that would lead to higher student engagement, which is great.
So one question, because, you know, COVID's gone and over and with Neon. But how do you, you know, when we do the survey, your questions that you're asking, how do we get to a point that we can see, you know, that we are improving? Because some of the questions are being asked, and I don't know if you're keeping some of the questions the same.
Some of it just has to do with the surveys that we have to give.
Right, yeah.
So some years, Sharon, we use more formalized surveys, like we used Panorama to help us with the survey. Extremely comprehensive. In between, we'd like to do temperature readings. So from that larger survey, we wanted to continue with the questions around safety, around belonging, because we know that that matters. So we developed our own questions, but under that same topic to make sure that we're continuing in a positive trend in the way that we want to go with students, with parents and with staff.
And correct me if I'm wrong, so the reason we didn't just lift the questions for Panorama is those are proprietary. So we can't just.
Of course, of course.
So for our faculty and staff, our strengths were belonging and feeling like they fit in at the, in the HJMS community, which is really, for us, really a great thing, that the staff enjoys coming to work and being at work. 90.3% is a really high number. And we think a lot of that is, we did a lot of work, the Roar Goals, setting goals about what, you know, how do you want to contribute to the community beyond your classroom setting or, you know, beyond your typical instruction. Also, we put out surveys, for example, when we were doing scheduling, just asking teachers, you know, opinions on their scheduling preferences, on their duty preferences, because duties has a lot to do with their attitude of coming to school, whether they have lunch duty, hall duty, because people like that. And so really just giving them some choice in the matter and input and whether or not we can meet it. We say that we can't always meet it, but at least we're giving them the voice and having the conversations with them. And they feel supported. I think when issues have come up, they feel like, you know, we're there to support them. Their colleagues are there to support them and it's a really strong community feeling in the building.
What, what percent of the faculty, staff responded to the survey?
I believe all, like we chase them down.
Okay.
You don't want 90% to fly.
In the past, in the past, other, other surveys have.
So like families, we don't get them all.
Yeah, but the staff we do.
Students, we make sure they all take it.
Yeah.
And staff, we go out.
No, I remember in the past, and I don't know if it was Henry James or what, it wasn't that answer. And I thought, well, these are opinions we need to get.
And in fairness, some of we give them.
Provide them time. If you give them, hey, we're going to end our faculty meeting, want you to do the survey right now.
Before you leave, pull it up.
It gets it done.
Precisely how we do it, is we give them time during the faculty meeting.
Because otherwise.
It's like the kids in study hall.
We do get the survey data from the paraprofessionals.
Yeah, this is all the staff. Paraprofessionals and secretaries and custodians, you know, everybody.
Everybody in the building.
Yeah, it is.
Thanks.
All adults. Some concerns or suggestions from the staff. Behavior was a big concern. Last year we did have some, a very small, I think it was 6% of our, of our population caused over 90% of our office referrals. You know, so it was a big, a lot of events for a small group of students. And they were very, some of them were very public, that, you know, things that happened in the cafeteria and the gym. And so, you know, that, it was, some of it was challenging to handle. And so that was a primary concern. Staff getting to know each other. And that's kind of another coming out of COVID. We had hires amidst COVID and, you know, people were really in their own rooms and they want to get to know each other. The hallways and lunch, again, that was behavior related. Lunch, the 30-minute lunch is challenging, not going to lie. Kids eat for 15 minutes. And then those next 15 minutes, you know, of unstructured time, you know, it can get loud and they can. They have a lot of energy. They don't have recess, so they have a lot of energy and that is, that's a challenge. And, you know, we already hit on students not having some of the fundamental study skills of how to be a good student and how to, you know, organize themselves, get their work done, time management.
Is that something you can work with the sixth grade teachers on? So they kind of come in with more of that?
Oh, I thought you meant lunch.
Lunch workers, I want to do a shout out to them because they do their best with what they got. Very appreciative of that.
Yeah. And the, and the staff that, you know, oversees lunch duty, that's the teachers that have that duty. That's, it's a challenging duty to have. Yes, they really do.
Heroes.
So in response to some of that data, data, we've already talked about increasing our staff in the hallway and the lunchroom supervision. In our effort to get to know you, some of that has come out of Roar Goals. We have teachers who have done Roar hikes or chili cook-offs or different things to bring the staff together. We also did as part of our professional development this year, and I brought some to share. We did trading cards for the staff. So it's their all-star stats. And they shared them with each other. And then every month we have a bulletin board in our display cases. And we're displaying a different portion of the faculty. And then we're going to be bringing them back during different faculty development. They're fantastic. So those are some of the office staff and custodial staff, because they were just in.
Oh, I like a rookie card.
So the staff has really appreciated the efforts to get to know each other, which has been great. The summer work on study skills. So we had an amazing committee of teachers that came together. The music department, special education, math teachers, world language, and really focused on, you know, what does it mean to be a good student? And based on student feedback, staff feedback, we had a lot of family feedback in this area as well. And we were able to look at, and we'll talk about it more, how do we restructure the first week of school? How do we do some lessons on study skills and parenting stuff throughout the year on that front? And we've talked about the staff choice and PD.
Now you're doing, I'm sorry, just go back to study skills for one second. So you're talking about the EF work that you're doing.
Yep.
And I would assume that that's somewhat targeted at kids who have shown need. But I also think every student can benefit from. When I was at Henry James and when my friend Jeff here was at Henry James, we had study skills as a class. And it was really helpful.
Back when our kids were there, it was done through the reading classes at Henry James.
That's true. That was.
So Jaclyn, why don't you skip to what that looks like?
Because I think we're all really curious about that.
I'm very excited.
The suspense. Fantastic. But so what we did was we really looked at a lot of pieces of it. And some of it is individualized instruction, our executive functioning class for, you know, a targeted group of students exists where we can do that work. But we, this was really focused on the whole school.
Great.
Part of it was at the beginning of the year, we looked at how do we kind of slow down the pace of the beginning of the year? Because the first day of school, they go to connections for about two hours and then go through this crazy eight-period day where they were 12 minutes. And kids are crying by the end because they can't even find their class in 12 minutes. And so you walk out the first day feeling a little bit defeated. And so we started the first day where they stayed in connections the entire first day and they went over the schedule. They found their lockers. They did get-to-know-you activities. We did a lesson on like how to be a student at Henry James. Did tours of the building. They had their team meetings. So that was all the first day of school. And then the next two days they spent in connections about an hour and a half to two hours before they went to half of their classes. So the second day of school, they went to their odd classes. The, the third day of school, they went to their even classes. And in those mornings, we did some more study skill lessons focusing on just the organization, the agenda piece. We did some Google Classroom lessons where they kind of, it was, you've got to think about organization on paper, but also in your drive. So kind of cleaning out their drive from sixth grade or from seventh grade and organizing that as well. We did some lessons.
Eighth graders do this as well.
We did it with the eighth graders.
Seventh grader.
Yep. And I think next year, well, this was the first year we did it. So I'll have to do some adjustments for the eighth graders because some of it was too easy or not necessary for them. And then it's continued on. We did a lesson on Power School. So how do you look at Power School? How do you manage it? We did a, in, through our ELA classes, a lesson on writing emails. Because coming up, they don't know how to use email. They write the whole email in the subject line or they're like, yo, and they use, you know, all the acronyms and.
Because we figured that people are not going to read the whole list.
Get out of the subject line, Sharon.
So it's, this is an ongoing, the committee is still meeting and we're still looking at. Our next thing is kind of like an end of trimester one. You know, what do we need to do to reboot the second trimester? So we're looking at lessons for that. And, you know, we're working on how to get it all implemented with fidelity, with all connections in the same way. So that's a challenge, but it's been really great, the feedback from students on the first week and teachers on the first week. It was a heavy lift at the beginning because our PD sessions before school started was teaching the teachers this. And then they had to do it the first week of school. So there was a little bit of stress around that, but the payoff was great. We, I think, behavior-wise, academically, we've seen such an impact.
Benefits all of them.
Yes.
Because those kids move on, but the kids coming into their classes. That benefit.
So, so it was a great start to the year.
This is sort of related to this. So you guys both mentioned more teachers in the, in the hallway during the, the in-between class time. This is sort of an issue we've also had to, we've talked with the high school about. Just curious, the teachers have, did they embrace this? Were they resistant? Were they like, oh God, this is another thing I got to, you know, just curious.
Yes. I think it's to go back to what Jaclyn was saying is giving teachers choice. There are some teachers who they just can't handle that their kids in the hallway, so they get to be the hallway duty people, right? And they're excited to be in the hallway because they want everything to be ordered and all. So we, and the people who like to be able to do study hall, they're doing study hall. So the teachers we have on hall duty want to be there and they're really doing a good job at.
And you had enough that wanted to be there.
And I think our philosophy is twofold with this and it's important to say, it's, they're not there just for enforcement. We talk a lot about, you're there to say, good morning, hey, how you doing? And ask questions and make it friendly in the hallway too. Like, so I think you get both by having that increased presence, just those little touches that are, that are of kindness, but also wears your pass, right?
Good to see you. Can I see your pass? Are you lost?
And it's, it's, it's mixed throughout the day, just depending on teacher schedules. So there's some periods that have more people in the hall than others. There's a few periods that don't have anybody, just because of the scheduling numbers. So, you know, we took what we had and then we're able to make that work. So it's been, it's been really positive.
In terms of just how it lives, you know, I've been up at high school, I know they're having kids like sign in and out of the bathrooms and stuff. We're not to that level. Our kids are, we have people posted more at like high-traffic areas where we're just sitting. So it's a little different, it lives a little different than that. And just to like piggyback on to the study skills piece. I was, I taught at Henry James when we still had the study skills class way back. And, you know, I think our philosophy going forward. And, you know, I think our philosophy going forward with this is that all kids need a good start and they need periodic reinforcement. But not all kids need a full semester class. But the kids that do need full semester or full year support, we also have a program for them too. So it's, it's really multi-tiered in terms of how we're trying to address the study skills. And then like just to, as a reminder, Jaclyn is beginning that work with the elementary schools to provide, I think, a more solid link between sixth grade and seventh grade.
Yeah, sixth grade could probably use a whole class on it.
Well, sure, you know.
And when you, and when you talk about it, you're really, your examples are really more organization.
Yeah.
But I do think that there is a disconnect, or at least in my experiences, there's been a big disconnect and my kids never had any study skills. But like, that there isn't true study skills, like how to take notes, how to organize your notes, how to study for a test and that kind of stuff. And that's what I feel like is.
And, and some of that.
A lot of kids.
Some of that we're working on, like that's next step and it's individualized per department too. Because what works in math doesn't work in ELA. So it's, you know, figuring out that piece of it too. So that is kind of where we're looking next because we, after the first, I think it was the October faculty meeting, we gave a survey to the teachers about their feedback on how they thought it went and what they want us to focus on next. And that was the area that they want us to focus on next, so it's definitely on everyone's.
Especially before they get to high school.
I think it's important.
Yeah.
Really important.
Years ago, Brenda Goff taught a summer class on study skills. And I made my oldest take it and she was very unhappy with me because it was a week in August in Simpah High School. But it was, she used it right through her masters, like she said that was invaluable. So if we can weave that into.
We do have a little bit of a summer program that we do to help kids off with a good.
But that's such a, like, not everyone's going to take that, right?
About like twenty-five kids.
Not everyone's moms as mean as me.
Yeah, or me. My kids do business off to.
No, but it's so important, right? We forget that we have to teach directly into these skills. So you have the general organization prioritization kind of skills. Then you have very specific skills based upon content and how do I study for a specific area? And then what I love about middle school is the, well, there are many things, but the team structure. So you have these smaller environments where the teachers can consistently reinforce what's been directly taught in a very, very meaningful way. And they are really enhancing all three layers of that at Henry James. It's really exciting to see.
Great.
The back half of this is going to go really fast because I was going to talk about all the things we're doing this year.
Excellent.
So we covered quite a bit.
Love it.
I'll go quick through it. I mean, you can just talk quickly about.
Very bad at listening to presentations.
This is good.
Well, we've talked a lot about Roar and setting the Roar goals. It's something that we continued this year. So students and staff set Roar goals about respect, responsibility, integrity. And the Roar goal itself is really about adding to the community. So how do you add value to the community? And, you know, we have everything, like people do MVP of the class. We have a teacher who brings in baked goods and helps us all gain weight. And we have, you know, a teacher who organizes hikes. Scott does his Instagram. I have a rolling desk that I'm trying to do work in the hallway, so I'm more visible in the hallway. So everyone's kind of, how do we add to the community in different ways? And there's seven characteristics that we can learn from a line. We've kind of been using that to structure our climate committee work and that's something that we found. And so, for example, this month, we focused on Lions, our leaders and surrounding Veterans Day and how do you lead within the building? So it's, it's ongoing, so it's great.
I had to include Jaclyn's bulletin board there. She does this amazing bulletin board every year. Like around the border is every student's name based on what team they're on. And you can see all the character traits there and the team color lines. That's pretty, it's a pretty strong bulletin board, I will say.
It looks like a mosaic, so I love it.
It's really well done.
And it's awesome. You saw kids just in the first couple of days, like where am I, where am I, right? What a great way to enhance belonging.
That stays up all year. And I think.
As long as it holds.
As long as it holds.
Everyone file them out there with a stapler.
Jimmy, like a little, like plastic to go over top?
Well, I think it tests them into how much their kids respect, like that kind of thing. They don't touch it.
So true.
When do they do these goals?
It's in those, in those first couple of weeks, in their connections classes.
Back at them.
Yes. So we'll revisit after the end of the trimester. That'll be one of some of their connections lessons to revisit the goals, readjust. You know, I'll have a message to talk to them about that kind of stuff.
And for the teachers, the Roar goal is part of their PG, their professional growth plan. So in the, the one focused on school community environment, they, that's where their Roar goal falls.
Kids who come in mid-year, that's part of kind of their.
I mean, that's one I think we need to do better on, right? I would imagine we, we like that, I think a lot of that leans on the connection teacher they're assigned. And I would imagine is, as we are doing, hey, we're revising Roar goals. Oh, you're new, you didn't set one. Let's set one now, kind of thing. But yeah, that's something we probably need to look at a little more closely. All right, so we take all of this, this report from, from last year and we talk about our goal setting for this year. So all of our goals are set, you know, with the Board of Ed areas of focus on student growth and success, compassionate and connected school culture, premier work faces and sustainable investments. And then with that, we take the vision of the graduate into account when we're making plans for the year. Was just in a wonderful planning meeting for, for our Vision of the Graduate Committee with, with Mrs. Lumke today. And talking about our next steps with that group. So good work going on there. And then from there, I take a one-pager and make like, these are our priorities based in these, in these, that are aligned to the district goals. You can see momentum is kind of our theme because we have such positive momentum moving forward. And then I'll talk to you really quickly about, I'll take some of the highlights out of each one of these pieces. We, I think we talked enough about the study skills, but I'll, I'll just mention a couple of quick things about it. But, so for climate and culture, our SEL committee is going to continue working with students to add elements of Roar throughout the building. One of the things we want to do is replace a lot of the signage that has like the old Hurricanes logo on it still and everything. And students are coming up with the attributes that they want to show of like, hey, what does it mean to roar in the hallway, in the auditorium? You know, those kinds of things. We're working to align a lot of our curriculum with the castle standards. So much of that is done in our health and wellness classrooms, but the pieces that aren't done there, we're developing connection lessons to do in our connections classes. Jaclyn already kind of talked about the PTC learning series. We're continuing those. We have one on executive function coming up December fifth. Is that correct? Yeah. Six to eight, Henry James.
Six to eight, Henry James. Dr. Kathleen Webb, she's done some work. She's a local psychologist and she's been doing some workshops through her own practice on executive functioning. So she's going to bring it here and apply it to the Henry James community.
And then I think one thing that, like we had a first last year with our eighth grade promotion ceremony. We're going to try a first next year. We were, I was planning on trying to launch mid-year teacher conferences, like mid-year check-ins this year. But, you know, I think an organization can only take on so much and we went so hard on the study skills that I said, I think we can push this to next year. I want to do it right. So we have a committee working on communication overall in terms of how we're communicating. I think in our survey, it says it's something that we do well, but I still think it's something we can do better. And I want to really, I want to do a better job at showing parents how you can communicate and what are the different avenues? Because I think that's feedback I've heard, is that I'm not sure who to talk to or that sort of. So we're going to, along with that, try to do a mid-year teacher conference and couple that with the high school exam time. So that transportation wouldn't be an issue for our kids getting home if we were going to do a couple early. So, so that's in the works for, for next school year. So we have a committee working on that and we'll, we'll get some parent input on that near the back half of the year as well.
I think that's great. That was, I didn't know there weren't parent teacher conferences in the middle school until I.
Nobody ever knows it until you come in, right?
Wait a minute, we haven't had one yet, what's going on? So it's obviously because of the amount of students that each teacher would have to.
There's so much that goes into this, like if you, I've done a lot of work talking about area middle schools. Nobody does it the same way. Everybody does something different and that goes to show that there's no one way that really works. You can't meet with every teacher. It's just impossible. You'd have to take a month off of school for that to happen, for every parent to meet with every teacher.
And then when you do optional signups, like pick the teacher, like being a math teacher, like.
I'm worried about the, I'm worried about the equity on that one, right? So we have some ideas, but they're not ready for public consumption yet. So, but we have, I think we have some interesting ideas because we're starting from scratch. We're not trying to inherit some thing that has been done for years to years. And we've been able to talk to a lot of area middle schools and talk about different ways. But I think conferences is going to just be, I think, important to note. It's one way we're communicating, like a guaranteed time, but it certainly is not the only way. And in that, so we're going to talk more about this and I think next year when I come here, we'll have a full-on plan and I'll, I'll show you what we're going to be doing. Student growth, I think the, I talked quite about this already in terms of what we're doing to look at our student data. But professional learning communities is, is an area where we're going to put quite a bit of effort into the second half of the year. And really, we've used a lot of these professional learning community times to revamp our curriculum, figure out how to get through COVID, figure out how to get out of COVID for its curriculum. And not as much time looking at student data individually and such. So that's one of our goals for PLCs this next, next half of the year. And then I think student-created academic goals, when we do our formative assessments, those of you that are in the middle school now might hear like the STAR testing and stuff. It's some formative testing we do along the way. Students are creating their own goals when they get their results. They're looking at their own results and saying, this is what I need to improve on. If I had a tough time with Pythagorean theorem, like that's something I got to figure out and work through. So that's, I think, a, a good thing to do there at the right age to be able to do that. Spiral review already talked about, targeted standards already talked about. And I mentioned the collaboration with some of the, like the art and the math and the world language and so. And, and on this one, really, we're continuing to work on our student-centered learning and inquiry. Study skills integration is, is obviously the big one. The one we, piece we didn't talk about that I just wanted to highlight, there's a little picture of it right there, is something that we notice students can't do and that's get ready for class. It seems so little, right? So we started something called the first four. And that is like each teacher has some expectations in the class of the first four minutes, like a minute before the bell rings and three minutes after the bell rings. What are you supposed to do? A lot of timers are, a lot of teachers are having timers up on the board. So kids have a reference to say like, I got to get this stuff done, I got to get my binder, I have to get the homework out, I have to open to page forty-seven and so now I'm ready to go. And, and I don't fault the kids for that because I, as an elementary principal, they're in one or two rooms. So they don't ever have to get ready. So we expect the kids to not ever have to get ready, to then get ready eight times a day to eight different standards for eight different teachers. So we're trying to teach them how to do that. So when they hit high school, the teacher doesn't have to say, all right, everyone, open your notebooks and get out your pencil or do this, that they're able to independently do that.
Teachers aren't yelling at them.
Right, and.
And this really is, and one of my goals for them is that their directions are non-verbal. The kids need to come in, reference whatever's on the board, figure it out, know the routine. And that, you know, as I'm doing my classroom observations, I don't want to hear you say, all right, everyone, get out your pencils up. They should be able to do that on their own now. So this has been something I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from teachers on.
And I think it's increased the efficiency and the, maximize the teaching time in the classroom too. Because that amount of time where kids are like, oh, you know, I was out yesterday, I was this, and that can eat up fifteen minutes of your class. And it really, the teachers have seen a benefit, you know, to the efficiency of their classroom.
It's so simple, but so smart. It just moves you.
And I want to give a shout out to Andrew Kohanski. So he's a band teacher that was on the committee and this is something that he did in his classroom. And so it just shows that, you know, a lot of times we compartmentalize your academics versus your arts. And what he brought to the table on this committee was, was awesome and has taken flight in the whole school. So it's been great.
I love that.
It's good, basic conditioning, yeah. We're just conditioning them to be ready to learn, right?
I see Sophie smiling over there. You want to comment on that part? I think you.
I think some high schoolers could have.
What do you think about all these study skills, Sophie? Are you wishing you had it?
I think it's really useful. I think it's also important because I feel like a lot of kids, like at least I did, that I felt like I had to study like one certain way or like the way I saw my friend doing it. So like teach kids that they can do it.
There are multiple ways, right?
Really good point, Sophie.
Excellent. And then I think the last piece of teaching learning is our, our curriculum review cycle that, that Sue's put together. So right now on deck, we're really taking a hard look at our social studies, art and school counseling curricula. And that's something that is a big, big push this year. So what I'd like to leave you with is just some people's Roar goals. You know, we talked a lot about them, it was a thread through, so I took some videos of some teachers and students sharing their Roar goals. So I thought I'd share them with you. I don't know if we have volume.
Well, we do. We did this afternoon.
There's no volume yet. You got to wait for.
You got to wait for it?
My Roar goal is to reach out at least three times a week to parents with good news.
Hi, I'm Leanne.
And I'm Trinika.
And these are some examples of how we help out the school in the area at Henry James.
One example is that I helped out Open House this year.
And another example is that I helped out, I feel like I asked myself a lot.
My Roar goal is to collect memorable moments in the school this year as co-advisor of the year.
My Roar goal is to be respectful and kind to everybody I see and always try to make friends everywhere I go and to be the most respectful person I can be.
My Roar goal is to learn one new thing from each of my classes every day and to be kind and respectful to anyone that I encounter throughout my day.
My Roar goal was to work on my grades. Of course, your high grades have been way better than last year. So I'm pretty proud of that.
It's about the first weekend.
My Roar goals this year are, I'm, I'm going to try my best on grades and try to improve at each trimester. And I will try to make good friendships this year.
Yeah, so my Roar goal was to be better about giving out the details. I wanted to do that, to really just improve the positive interactions that I'm having with the students and especially using it to help reinforce my first four minutes. That's it?
My name is Grayson Clancy and my Roar goal is to try to study every day for a test and try to make new friends.
Hi, I'm Village Nice and this year my Roar goal was to help support One School, One Look.
Well done, you know, really clever.
I agree and I have to greet somebody.
My Roar goal was to stay in class and get good grades and I have a pretty good state.
My name is Jeremy and my goal was to put in my best.
The girl on the right, I'm sorry. She's.
My Roar goal is to bring in cookies and other baked goods to help bring the staff together.
Oh, so it's her.
Really good news. So that's my Roar.
Hi, I'm Nick. My Roar goal is to surround myself with people.
Love it.
This is great.
Those are great. So, you know, out of, out of their own mouths, I mean, it's really kind of cool to see the things they're working on. I didn't mention One School, One Book. That was a wonderful celebration.
Are you picking a different book every year?
Yeah, because the eighth graders will have bread.
Oh, so, sorry. Let me get my hetero. One school, not one grade, one school.
So that was a hugely successful endeavor as well.
It was awesome.
That's great. It was a great book.
We had the author come and speak to the kids.
The author was fantastic.
So did you bring all the kids together to hear from the author or did you?
No, we did.
Grade level.
We had to do it twice because one grade all fits.
I was going to say, that's a lot of kids.
And it was neat to see the different departments, like the art teacher, there's an artist reference in the book and she created a gallery of the artist's work that the kids could go visit. And in social studies, they mapped out all the places. And in world language, they, you know, especially French, they talked about the vocabulary. So it was neat how the whole school embraced it in their classes as well.
Very cool, very cool. I'm sorry we put you off at the last meeting, but thank you for coming here. And I'm sorry we missed Henry James this year, but thank you both so much. This is awesome.
Thank you, Scott.
You guys are doing great.
I have to take the trading cards.
Okay. Yes, we need the trading cards.
Those are great. So fun.
Did anybody else recognize the MTV DJs?
Yes, I saw that.
I was like, am I the only one who knows who they were?
Nineteen eighty-three, that started it.
I fell, I fell off.
We all got it.
Downtown Jewel Ground.
We don't recognize it, but we do. We know who they are.
You know.
Okay. Capital Improvement Plan, my understanding is we're going to delay discussing that. Some key players are not here tonight, so we're going to hold it for our next meeting.
Great.
All right.
Do we need to make, do we need to amend the gen-
No, because it's under information and reports. So that was just, there's your information. We'll report next meeting.
Thank you.
And then quarterly budget analysis.
Quarterly budget analysis, you know, I'll do my best. So the format is what we're typically used to looking at in our quarterly budget analysis. So I just thought it would be helpful to highlight a couple of things of note. First, I'd like to talk about grant awards. So we received some final grant awards at the end of September of this year. And the most significant changes first are the Individual Disabilities in Education Act grants, the IDEA grant specifically with preschool. So the final award was $1,176,082, which is an increase of just over $56,000 compared to what we had prior, in the prior fiscal year. The second component is the Carl Perkins Grant. The final award was $48,425, which was an increase of just over $7,000 from the prior fiscal year. So that is good news on the grant piece of things. As far as expenditures, three things that I want to highlight, of course, there's the original budget, year-to-date expenditures, and then how that compares to last year and percent expended. So first is transportation. So we have a higher spending rate than usual. A couple of reasons. First and foremost, the increased need to engage with outside vendor transportation for students with specified needs that require that. So we had shared that we were anticipating this increase in spending during our fiscal year '23 year-end results presentation. So that is coming to fruition. The second is under maintenance of plant and equipment. Our rate of spending is a little bit slower this year due to some of the HVAC repairs that we performed last year prior to the start of school, right? So we're not going to see that same rate of spending comparatively.
Running more efficiently.
Yes. And then finally, our out-of-district tuition. Again, an increase in the spending of the current year relates to two things, timing of payments, and also we saw an increase in some tuition costs for out-of-district students. So certainly, if you have additional questions that I cannot answer, we can direct them to Amy, but those are the highlights that I just wanted to point out to you today.
I think that's the student body activities.
Student body activities, sure.
Just the numbers.
Those are going to be mostly stipends paid to teachers for running a club sport, and they get paid at the end of the year.
Yes.
So that you're going to see very little-
Right.
In this first quarter, you're going to see very little spending on that.
You're going to see coaching stipends directly related just to this couple of months.
Right, the fall sports.
So, yes.
I have some questions. Going back to the district state grants, the open choice, the two-top on the open choice. How many students do we have in the open choice?
167, Neil, is that correct?
A little bit more than that one.
Okay.
We're up over 170.
So we're at that 4%.
We're at that, yeah, we've been at that 4%. So we're at that. And then the second part is the open-choice attendance, the early learning. So we, the grant funding was anticipated to total over a million, 1.7. So what do you think, you're reaching out to the state for additional subsidies? Do you think that's-
I think it's, it's too early to say, and that's why we're reaching out. But certainly, we can give the board any kind of updates once we make those connections.
I'm glad that you are. I'm glad that you are reaching out for that. And then the third part was on the spent placement and excess cost. So the award will be released in January. You have any idea what you think at all?
That's typical. I mean-
Always holding on.
We always are conservative in our excess cost estimates, just in case they aren't funded to that percentage. So we estimate a little bit lower, around 72% to 75%, but they've been trending higher than that. But again, we estimate in a conservative way just in case because we never know.
Okay, okay. And the reason why I bring that up is because part of what we're doing now for the delegate assembly for, for one of the resolutions, we are, we are the spent excess cost grant. So we're going to urge the general assembly to fund the excess cost grant in the excess of 3.5 times. So we have it down here. So I'm glad that, to see that's over here, because this is something that I can use at, at the delegate assembly in terms of the resolution.
Great. Anything else?
I don't know if it's related, not related, but at some point, we're going to, or we really get to budget time to have a conversation around ARPR.
Around?
ARPR.
Oh.